This meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, it was August twenty first at six oh two P M.
What's going on?
Roll call.
Okay, you're kidding. Hold on, six oh two. Okay. Uh, Chairperson Frenzel is absent. Co-chairperson, Aldley.
You're.
Commissioner Sandage, here. Member Henry, here. Uh, member Lori Rapperty, here. There you are. Remember Julie Missick, here. Mayor Coleman is absent. Mayor Pro Tim Smith is absent. Town Board member Terry Howard. Town Board member Terry. Here. You're there. Town Minister Kim Bowie, here. Attorney Ruth Born is absent, and I am here.
Hmm, what did you miss, Ruth?
Yep, she ended up having to fly out to Florida.
Yeah. She's, it's been a crazy thing. Yes.
The bubble come?
Uh, yeah. No. Old business comes after new business.
That's right. Okay.
So.
And public comment. Public comment. Anybody have any public comments?
Oh, shoot. Why? Don't start in my three minutes.
Hold on.
Okay, I, I want to say that anything I say, let's not all hold personal. Because I feel like there's people in town that have an attitude sometimes when I have an opinion.
I don't think, we don't know you, so.
Okay. So, I know you guys were gonna start talking about the, um, the rules and regs or the table uses, because it's, it's, it's an issue. I, I'm in a place that I feel like pretty much most commercial businesses in this town, buildings, should be able to be used for pretty much anything, unless there's a sexual content, drugs, something that's immoral. I, I'm, I'm just pulled so deep into trying to figure out what the issues are. I keep getting told, or I have been told, but I've never gotten a good answer why certain businesses can't be in these C one buildings. I'm gonna be honest with you, and I know how some of you feel. I've had a talk with, we've talked. I understand people's issues with certain businesses. Maybe don't feel like a daycare should be saved in that building. But to be perfectly honest with you, I feel like that's not a, that's not a decision this board should make. This board should be making decisions based on if it's a use that the town needs, if it's, if it's necessary and gonna bring in tax dollars. I think we need to be looking more on that basis, not a personal basis of whether you think it's a safe building. That's up to, that's up to Della. That's up to, not up to this board. And, um, because that did not become a daycare, I still don't have at least. I've been sitting in the building almost a year. And I'm finding out everything I'm trying to do has been an issue.
What building, Joey?
Uh, it's the bank building.
The old bank.
Oh, the old bank building.
Right next to her, Dos Pichin.
I understand.
To the, um, much of the.
Well, tell her, Joey.
Well, um, Safeville came back and said I have to do about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of suppression system. I can't make enough money on that building to do it. It would take me years to try.
Sprinkler system.
Awesome, like, full system. Even though I'm not changing the building, not changing the structure and not changing anything structurally with it, it comes down to the use, the use that's gonna be there. I, I'm pulling it straight things to find something that's gonna work in there that I can actually do. I mean, I'm, I'm left up to these two churches that are just mind boggling to me that you might have another church in town. Between churches and construction companies, I mean, gee, many is Christmas.
Well, do churches have to pay taxes?
No.
But why, why put another?
If you're interrupting her three minutes, we can't.
I'm agreeing with her.
You need to add three, three more minutes. I'm not trying to find people, I am not trying to not get along. I've been in this town a long time, but I'm kinda getting over it. Because I do think that you guys need to look at it and go, there shouldn't be many uses in a C one building that I can't do. Not many, and I would say two of them, pornography and maybe drugs, and that's about it. Find another reason that most anything else can't go in there, and I'm willing to hear it, but it isn't fair. This is like totally violating my right of use on this building. I, I'm getting, I, I, I don't know what to do. I can't go another year. It's costing me fifty thousand a year for that building to sit there. It's killing me. You guys gotta, I, and I'm hoping you guys have been talking, because, uh, these two have, these two have been awesome and said that you guys are really working on the table uses. But really, when you're looking at it, you guys need to think that there shouldn't be much. It's a small town. This is not a high revenue. We're not in Breckenridge or Aspen, where we can pick and choose, just, you know, boutique. I'd love to do boutique hotel. But unless the town's gonna pitch in a hundred and fifty thousand for the suppression system, I don't think I can do it. I mean, really, I'm surprised I have to have it with four suites, but that's what they're telling me. So, I just hope you guys will really, really, really take a look at the uses and really, really, really consider. Otherwise, I think that I'm gonna have to get a business in there that I don't really wanna get in there. And right now, there's two, there's two churches, the Scientology and another one, they, it's the snake handlers, snake handlers. They're, they, they're out east and they wanna come this way with their church. Look, I, and I, it's not even gonna bring revenue into this town.
We don't want snakes in here.
But by law, you guys who are not could be able to turn that one down. They would sue the crap out of this town if you turned down a church. So if I sign a contract with them, if there's gonna be a church in there, and it might not be a church we want.
No, no.
I'm not even saying I personally have an attitude against it, because to be perfectly honest with you, I don't really know about either one of those churches that much. It's not really my place to know about them. But I have to rent the building. I'm not really in a place to start another business. I'm stretched really thin.
So they don't have to have the thing that you need to have, the suppression system?
She has to have the suppression system.
Because people are sleeping in there. Because it's gonna be considered a four unit sleeping unit, even though it's one story and this, this, the actual building itself is not changing at all. Like, I'm not changing structurally any of it, but it comes down to the, the use, the use of the building is what comes in the place.
The cost.
Right, and it's very expensive. Just the tap fees in the town, I looked it up, are thirty or forty thousand, and that's just if they okay to tap in. That isn't the work. And then you got the full suppression system. It'll cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Terry had a comment to those suppression systems.
Oh. I looked up, and I don't know anything about anything construction wise. I looked up the old timey sprinkler systems that you have in the older motels and stuff. There's a difference between a fire suppression system and a sprinkler.
Yeah, and I might be saying it.
Will they not allow you to do this?
I think just that they, the sprinklers what costs so much. The suppression systems are, and so I, I, and there could be a misuse of how I'm saying that.
Okay.
So like, so if you go into a restaurant, you'll see suppression systems. It's usually over the hoods, so if there's a grease fire.
Well, whenever he was in here talking to us that day, he used the word suppression.
He did. I don't know what the total difference is. I'd probably have to do a little, I, I keep calling it suppression system, because it really is still putting out the fire. And I even tried to find out if there's a way to save the tap fee and even just do big tanks inside somewhere, but holding up water. Oh, I don't even know if that's, I mean, we're talking just so much money, and it's only four units. It's not like I'm gonna have a twenty unit place that's gonna make the money up. I can't even borrow that much money and, I don't even know from bank, what do you, they probably lock that.
So they're saying this is state code?
Yes.
It's international.
I have a question. Is the town in a position and have the authority to waive that tap?
I was hoping so, or even if it's not just the tap fee, I don't know if the town can waive the tap fee.
Yeah, do anything regarding the water.
No, that's K W W A's. I was hoping, and I was hoping the chief could give me some different ideas. I'm not trying to not make things safe. Like I said, I'll put in firewalls. Okay, that's very safe. Firewalls all the way to the ceiling. Um, full pull down alarms that would set off the whole building if a fire did occur, and even like extinguishers, and I was told no. I mean, to me, like, that's pretty safe. I mean, we're not going into halls of hotels. We're going right out a door. But they just said it's international and they, they don't think, Safeville's telling me they can't look away from it. They can't work around it. I don't know if they can and they just won't. I don't know that. I don't know.
So wouldn't that have applied to the daycare?
No.
Because they're not, because they're not sleeping overnight.
They're not sleeping overnight.
And so why can't?
Can we make it how like babies sleep in there? Yeah, it's a night.
They would not have had to have one to daycare. Um, there's not many businesses you do have to have it, actually.
Right.
So again, why can't we make it a daycare?
They just decided they don't.
The town center was not voted for.
It's town center.
For daycare. And that's, which is part of what we're talking about. We're assuming, because this was done way, way back when, but, um, it sits on highway.
Yeah, it's on a highway?
Yeah, that building is right there on the highway.
So does Cherry Valley Elementary for Douglas County Public Schools. So it's on Highway eighty three.
You can say it sits on a highway, but the speed limit is not fifty five.
Now, not only that, but it's town center.
Part of what we're discussing tonight, too, is, well, it is town center.
It also says schools not allowed there either.
Yeah.
But we got one sitting right up here on these, but it's not town center.
So how do we get, what, what red tape are we throwing out here that we can't make this happen? I'm not understanding.
Well, that's part of what you're, we're gonna discuss tonight.
You guys get down here.
I, I'm.
But we, we gotta get through these first.
I, and I'm, look, I know my time. I, I just want you guys to really consider this, because I'm gonna tell you, there's gonna be some businesses that you aren't gonna really like all that much at some point. I'm gonna have to do something. I don't want to do that. I just don't know how long I can keep doing what I'm doing.
Well, we can bring in a bank that doesn't even put out taxes to this town, so, but we can't allow you to do a daycare because it's close to a highway.
Some of these things I don't understand. It just wasn't okay in the.
At the time, it's not, it's not.
So that's what we're talking about tonight.
It's not a town, it's, it's town center. It's town center. I will tell you, if, if this puts anything in your.
You're killing me.
This lady that was gonna do the daycare is very experienced. She, uh, I'll be honest, she's, she's gone now. She's not coming back. She was too pissed. So that's not gonna happen anyways. I'm pointing out to you that there's businesses that you guys need to really make sure in the future, if somebody comes in and wants to do it. Uh, but State did come in. State, uh, Della came in, two representatives, two different times. I was there. I heard the conversations. And they both said, safe and fine. They would've had to take, like, out their front door. They would've gated that off. And so that if a child got out the front door somehow, it would've been gated, but they locked their doors down anyways with all the crazies out. So I'm not saying it's perfect. I'm saying those big cities with daycares, though, everywhere. I just want you guys to really think about it, because I'm gonna have to, I'm, I, I already talked to my realtor. I'm like, look, if I can't get something going pretty quick, I'll probably put it on the market, or we'll have another church.
Right.
I'm not slamming churches, by the way. I'm not slamming churches.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're never gonna get back to you.
I know. Sorry. If you have any more questions, feel free to ask.
They'll say, ask a question during public comment. You people are telling me.
All right, so.
Public comment. Next public comment.
None. It's always me. And that's it.
It's just Joey.
Uh, well, we have consent of items approval of agenda.
We approve the agenda as written.
A second.
Do you want me to approve?
You have to vote.
Oh, yeah, we have to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Uh, new business.
Nope.
Approval of the minutes.
See, see, I should've taken class on this. What, what do we have to now, there? Oh, approval of minutes from July seventeen, twenty twenty four meeting. Right? All.
I was not here, so I abstained. Um, I am making motion to approve minutes.
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Okay, so Sandy, you made the motion. Okay, and Shannon, second. And Julie abstained.
Okay, now we have new business, business application, Foster Helps, American Custom Ag.
All right, Foster, your turn.
My turn.
Yep.
Eight, six minutes.
Yeah, she's giving you a bonus.
Joey, stop treating.
You don't, you don't have the same limit. They can ask you questions about your business, so pretty much tell them what you're doing.
Uh, it's just agriculture. I would sell hay, we sell oil field pipe, railroad ties, um, I B C tow water containers, um, just changing them, done it up the road at mom and dad's for a long time and grown, and so we bought this lot east, east of town. It's getting it all going. We had to rezone it and then we're on to the business and since.
Um, tell me about your hay production. Are, are you, do you one hundred percent own that? Or are you leasing fields? Do you purchase other people's hay, bringing it?
All the hay comes from out of state, Nebraska. We own farms and ranches up in Nebraska, clients Nebraska area. All that hay is either, um, let's see, ninety percent of it's all grown and put up through my custom hay company, different company that me and my brother own. And then it's trucked, our trucking company, and then sold by this company. Um, so, I mean, that's.
Have you run that business model for the hay specifically through the Department of Agriculture?
Yeah, so they.
You need a farm products license.
So as long as, best as my knowledge, as long as I do not buy from a Colorado farmer ranch, I am not required to have that license. You know, and every year they come back, like I just, yeah, they're yearly now. That's, that's class six felony for operating this way, but, I don't mind getting that license. They could, they require you to be pretty well bonded to carry that license, and that's my only deal. Isn't become bonded and people all of a sudden.
So you value communicating with them?
Yeah, yeah, so, but there's, I've never bought anything from a, from a rancher in Colorado, just because of that reason, so.
Um, so, okay, so the, the hay is out of your farm?
Mm-hmm.
In Nebraska, so, okay.
Yep, ninety percent, I, I get about ten percent of it through partnerships and, and people want me to sell their.
Okay, do you sell hay in Nebraska also, or?
I do.
You do, okay. So you're just looking to expand?
Yeah, I, I mean, we've been selling hay up at mom and dad's private lot for, since twenty fourteen, I mean, here in high school, so.
Okay.
Um, it's been.
Now, are you, are you from, are you from Nebraska?
No, from, uh, Iowa.
Oh, okay, okay, cool, okay, okay. Anybody have any? Little questions, Terry?
Uh. Okay. Okay.
So you need to move to recommend it to go to the town board.
Okay. Okay, so I moved the rec, I moved the recommend this going to the town board.
A second.
Well, I make a motion to move it forward.
I'll take a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I.
Second. Okay, we're both.
Okay. Seeing who's taking credit for it, when we're gonna volunteer. Okay.
A second. See you next month.
Right, thank you. Already, thank you.
Here, I wanna give you this.
Good luck. Those guys are vicious.
I got this from Safeville, um, because you gave me the plant I sent it in. They want any of their.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, get that to me.
Okay, we'll see.
Selling your cars.
Okay. Just keep checking. Lost a list.
So, so, yeah, I said hi.
Okay.
No. It's where we're zoning.
All right, so now.
Any more new business? Is that all?
Yeah, that's it. Okay, so now we're into this piece. Okay, so this is the piece that Joey gave you last time. I know it's hard to read, but he didn't copy very well. So basically, the, the like six things in green, a bed and breakfast church, commercial parking lot, medical marijuana caregiver, operations, a restaurant, and a retail establishment are the only things absolutely permitted in a town center. Okay?
One question real quick before you go any further.
Yo.
It said bed and breakfast.
Yes.
So same thing as a hoax.
It's not. It's not. The definition is.
Not making them food.
Totally different, because she's not making them food.
Understand, but they're still sleeping there, so would she still have to have a suppression system?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, if she still win. And so then the things under special permit is the things she, that are in blue. So like a hospital, the hotel motel, which is what she went to, medical dental office, nightclub, nursing facility, office, outside storage, rec center, rec facility, residential dwelling, uh, solar, uh, solar energy on a roof, solar energy ground mount, veterinary clinic. Okay, the things in yellow are not permitted currently, currently, including the Choppy Center, so.
We're there. We're on top of it. If there's a problem.
At least right now. Well, right now, the problem is, we have a bar down the street. Bars are not permitted. We have a car lot. It's not permitted. So we have some, uh.
We have two gas stations.
Two gas stations, which are not permitted, all in town center. So, now, I gave you the whole sixteen, mostly what you really wanna go, and I, I left it in there in case you wanna look at the definitions of those various things. But basically, what we need to do is go to, and I left the town center, all that stuff in there, so in case you needed to look at that. So basically, you need to go toward the end and find this table of uses, non-residential zone district, okay? It's gonna be toward the end, like, maybe five or six pages in. Okay. So town center is that first column.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, so town center is basically from, what, is the post office considered, or is that outside?
That's outside town center, town center.
Forty-five. So the, the.
Town center is right there where the restaurants and the gas stations.
Right, but I didn't know if it came all the way up to.
Year. We're not town center.
We're not town center. Okay, anyway.
Essentially echo down to most.
Right, yes. So all of those things are in town center.
And what seems at town center?
Because it's the center.
It's the center.
It's the main center of town.
Commercial.
Main commercial part of town. So, what your guys' job is, is to look at these items that are on this list and decide if you want to change them from either not permitted or special permitted to permitted. And then we were talking about other things that aren't even on this list, like, um, like a, 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 a dog washing.
Grooming, it actually falls under another category on there.
Does it? Okay.
I think it would be advantageous to start with, but reading what we currently find town center as.
Right.
And if you go up, yeah, some papers, these papers aren't numbered enough.
No, that was my bad.
Um, you're wanting to come up.
Yeah.
The definitions.
No, after definitions, the center's doing this for.
Yep.
So you're here, you wanna go back about ten pages, maybe? And says section, section sixteen dash four dash two in town center. Yeah, it's more toward, yeah, keep going. It's more towards the back, yeah.
Almost there.
Yep. Okay.
So it'll help you better understand why it considers certain things applicable to town center, why, by the reason why it doesn't. And it has to do with the, the historical character of the town, essentially, by definition of what's currently written in the code. Um, it takes into consideration, uh, livable area of dwelling units, um, residential uses, uh, and as they've set proximity to the town center. It speaks to single family resident unit, units, um. It's on three pages. It also takes into consideration proximity to schools, parks, open spaces, uh, available, opening on and off site. What are the benefits to this town? Um, by having that particular type of business in that area of town. Um, traffic circulation throughout the neighborhood that would be caused by the business. Those are things that, um, make it a town center business, and why the code currently is written to the point where it says those are not allowed in town center. However, Joey's the one that found these contradictions. You know, we have a town center definition of why they can't be there, but they're all there. So how much sense does that make? They're not going anywhere, and really.
We can't go down there and tell them that they have to shut down their car neighborhood in the grocery store.
No, but as Joey pointed out, they've been down there for God knows how long, you know, how long they're gonna be there. And they've been very successfully operating there for a number of years. Should those sell for whatever reason and somebody else buy them and choose not to use them for that use anymore, change it to something else, they won't have the option to turn around and think it back to what it was now based off of our code. If they change their bar to something else, a bookstore, and then somebody, they sell it and somebody else comes in and buys it and decides, no, I wanna bring it back to a bar. It makes more sense being a bar. They can't do that anymore. Once it's sold and leaves the hands of the person, all in the, is that.
So we just have to broaden it.
So we need to bring that current. It, it makes no sense to have a code that says you can't have something that currently sits there. So we need to correct that, but then we also need to take a closer look at the things that can be put there. And why are they considered not allowable, you know, based off of what this says? You know, why can't they have a, um, a dog business or, or pet facility there? So if you look under the definitions, you and I were talking about dog groomer or pet store, those fall under pet animal facility. Adopting, breeding, grooming, selling, all of those things fall under pet facility, which is not allowed. Why can't they have a dog grooming business in that building? That makes no sense. You know, those are things we need to consider, you know, decide, should it really be not permitted?
Right, right. It's like, what's to you?
And that's what Joey's struggling with, you know, the limited availability of what she can do with that building is ridiculous.
It is ridiculous. So the thing is, we might wanna go through each of the ones that are at least here and look at them. And you guys.
And those are the starred ones that are not.
The starred ones.
It has a star. It's a flat out no.
It's a flat out no. And even some of the Ps, maybe you'd wanna change that to.
Special review.
Yeah, or, you know, the S's, change them to Ps or whatever, however you wanna do it, but that's something for you guys to look at and kinda just go down the list and say, okay, we probably maybe don't still want an adult entertainment establishment.
So we're looking at this one right here?
I, no, I would go to this one now, because I go to the easily read one. I just wanted to show you what Joey had highlighted, that her option was six things.
And P is permit, right?
Yes, so if it's a P, it's good.
Needs to permit.
That's by special review.
Now, P, P is, is you can use it.
For request and make a decision. And star is nada.
Not.
Neither, you have no option.
Which is half of the stuff that's already downtown.
Right, right, so that's why.
And whatever's on this list is, is already defined in that packet in some form or fashion.
Right, so if you wanna go back and look at the definition, before we say, oh, yeah, or, oh, ugh.
So I have a question. There are a couple of buildings downtown that are currently being used as, um, private residences. And it says that, and I could be reading it wrong, that it, the square footage of the living area can't be any less than two hundred and fifty square feet, and the residential uses cannot exceed seventy-five percent of the total commercial area of the structure. Um, and then no standalone, single family residential units are permitted, residential units must be part of at least a duplex design or higher. Well, there's that, what used to be the liquor store downtown next to Patty Anne's. They're using it as an apartment. And then the white building next to, um, Beano's. That's supposed to be some sort of, um, I think, uh, like a, yeah.
Her. Thanks, Paul. Yeah, it's, it's, no, it's the other one, the west, it's the west one. She's talking about the one that used to be the, uh.
Oh, okay.
Oh, so.
The longevity.
Jibbity.
So.
The long, the longevity or whatever it is.
You ha- if it's located in town center, it has to be presented as a storefront. One person can live there as a caretaker. So, it has to be a business, the storefront sitting there in the main town center. And the person who considers themselves a caretaker can live downstairs, upstairs, or whatever. Some, but that's how the code is written. That's how. And there actually is more than just those.
That's why, that's why we're.
But there's a lot of contradicting information in our head right now.
And then the apartments of M and K.
We, we need something that's gonna bring in revenue.
Yeah, we don't have that.
That's why there's a requirement that, okay, they can live in those buildings. But they can't live in those buildings without operating those buildings as a business, in that portion of the building. Has to be used for commercials.
Right, so like the liquor store.
One, in fact, Patty Anne's and the liquor store is, is and has been for quite a while, an issue with code enforcement.
Okay, because that, that used to be.
Oh, did it?
Years and years ago, it was a grocery store and a liquor store. When it was a liquor store, with the trailer behind it, and never the jerks that are gonna set our town on fire. Okay, and that's just another thing I don't understand. We can have a trailer in the middle of frickin' nowhere.
Maybe behind the store?
Yes.
What is a grandfathered in as?
It was just always there.
And has its own address, separate from the business and everything else.
Have to be rezoned back to commercial or zoned out.
But I think anything along there is so.
They just can't ever replace.
It's already, but yet it's under the guise that there's a business or just one.
Well, that's that, that one next to Patty Anne's, it's.
Yeah, that's, they, they call it an Airbnb, for the most part.
Really?
Yeah, who's Airbnb?
Uh, somebody, uh, Parker.
Parker, so, um. We have an Airbnb in town?
It's like a one room.
It's not supposed to be?
It's not listed on the Airbnb website.
No.
No.
Then why didn't anybody else in town get to keep?
We're working on it.
And that's why we're sitting.
That's why we're trying to do this.
Okay, that's why we're correcting.
I have a problem here is that. We need to really rethink a lot of these codes. You know, as painstaking as the first goal was with, a- as we sat here every night and everything. Unfortunately, to be able to really get things, we're gonna have to do it again. Gonna have to happen that way. I mean, if we, if we want growth, and, and, and we want, you know. People like Joey and whoever else comes in here to succeed in our town, because obviously, we're all. We, we want our town to build, we wanna bring in that revenue, we wanna bring in the people and everything else. If we don't do this, we're not gonna get anywhere. So. Uh, we need to rethink all this, and we need to be more generous with the town center. And understand that there's all kinds of businesses out there, and we can't, we, we can't pick and choose. I mean, we can't, we, we don't need to be picking and choosing, yes.
Something we can do, as we move forward. Kim pointing out that it's supposed to reflect the character of original downtown, yada, yada. Purple Creek. When they put the casinos in there, and I don't know if it was the same way in Black Hawk and Central City. In the existing building, they had to keep the front as it was. I mean, you could repair it and such, but you couldn't change the design of it. But once you get on the other side of the wall, you can tear that up and make it whatever. But that's still preserving the look.
And, and I'm all for that, I.
But we need to be able to get people in here to preserve that storefront and make it look better, because. Uh, bridal, what is the bridal place right here?
Unbridled.
Look at that building. Yeah, they gave the town a facelift, right there.
And they used all the same brick that came off that building to start with.
It's beautiful. Why would we not want that for our small town? Instead of hearing banjos when we drive in, we want to beautify this thing, right?
The people that own the bridal, they're concerned about the town stance and. All right, they are, they are, but the town stance by what they do and do not. What they argue with people about coming in town with, you know, why do you cause so many problems for people coming in town? For wanting to start businesses, what's wrong with that business? Why don't you wanna allow a business like that in this town? I don't know what's happened historically, that has created this atmosphere here, but. Um, it's, it's hindering Kiowa.
You know, one, one thing I think is that there's, for, for some time now. Um, there hasn't been enough people that truly care. About what was really going on in our town. Um, you know, we're, we're thankful for you guys, you guys, I mean, you guys work wonders, and it's awesome. But I, I just think for years, it's been neglected, and I don't think people have really paid attention to what's going on. And just letting things go and rolling with punches.
Well, I'll tell you this, I had a discussion with um, Dola today. Cause I have reached out to them to inquire a little bit more about the Main Streets program. We're getting ready to uh, start a major project right down the middle of town, in the main street area of Kiowa. Um, they can help us with that. Um, right now, we're affiliate on their little website, we're a little dot. That just says, we have an interest in this, but it doesn't say we're committed to this. I mean, that's not a, a long-term forever project that you're committing to, or your town. And the great thing about it is it pulls in everybody in this town, from all areas, your churches, your schools. Um, your businesses, um, your. Almost everybody, Historical Society, we're the county seat. This is where the county fair happens, you know, so. For Kiowa to have that kind of significance in Albert County. And not stand out in that aspect is a travesty. And they, uh, they come in and help the business owners. Um, that sit along this main street area, um, with funding to um, improve the storefronts of their businesses, to improve. Yes, they do, to, as long as the town is part of the program. It extends out to the entire um, area.
So you're, you're talking about a, like a nice median, a, a median.
I'm talking about the entire main street area from one end of town to the other.
Yes, because, but you're right, we're gonna get, they're gonna repave. They're gonna repave the main thing and the bridge is being replaced.
So why not?
Getting curbing gutter?
Why, why not?
Storm drainage, curb gutter.
Are getting that, Ken?
Yes, yes. Yes, the, this, it is started in the engineering process. Yeah, so it's gonna be all repaved curb gutters, it's gonna go down to, what'd you say, three? It's gonna have a, a one-way with a turn, so it's gonna be not five, it's gonna be.
I know I'm not supposed to ask a lot or anything. But, a lot of those storefronts down here, because we're so close to the road. For instance, Patty Anne's even, they'll be okay, but like, uh, the buildings where Debbie is, say, in the bar and, and all that. They're technically, all of, even like on the, at the bar, that walkway, it's just making public walkway, and it's a deck right now. Been that so wrong for so many years, what will happen with that? Will that be up to me to fix that?
No, no, that, for public, you'll have to be put into that conversation, but that will probably be. This will all end up being six foot eighty-eight compliant sidewalks.
It's crazy.
Yeah, but it's, it's gonna become eighty-eight compliant, we get a brand new bridge.
This is awesome.
Okay, so we know what needs to happen, right?
Yep.
We, we all have the same dream, right?
Yeah.
Well.
So, it's, you know.
Well, I think we owe it to, to. Everybody here in Kiowa, us, everybody.
Well, let's start changing it.
We have to battle through this, we gotta get down to nuts and bolts, and we have, however long it takes, we gotta do this.
I propose we start with the town center column, and take it line by line. And just, let's get a feel for how. Planning commission, I do too, uh, would rate these, are you guys on board for that?
Yeah.
Adult entertainment, that's no.
No.
Ambulance service, no. Amphitheater, no. Automotive sales and repair, I propose we change it to special use.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
Bar tavern, special use.
I agree.
Bed and breakfast is already permitted, bulk storage of dangerous materials, no. Bulk storage of liquid by petroleum gas, no.
I, excuse me just a minute, please, what about, um. Okay, I guess Glazer's might win.
Glazer's last actually is in town center.
Right, that, they're just their office spaces on the front.
Okay.
Their bulk storage is down off of.
Oh, you might chew the automotive sales repair, whoever's is under that, so.
Right. And that's why I said special use, so if, if the motor sells, the new owner can. And you'll keep maintaining that business.
Okay.
A childcare center, I propose that we change that to special use. Church, special use, permitted to special use, so that we can review each church uh, as it comes up.
You don't want the snake handlers?
No.
Scientologists and the snake handler.
I would definitely infringe you if you brought snakes.
Well, they, they speak in tongues.
Okay, Sandy, it's.
Whatever.
That's not a snake handler. That is a legitimate. I think Joey threatened us with that.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Commercial parking lots.
Uh, commercial parking lot permitted, I, is everybody okay with leaving it?
Yeah.
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 Go ahead, voice your, voice your concern.
Commercial parking lots. Does that mean they can tear down a building if they want?
Yes, and turn it into a parking lot.
I don't know.
So, make a historical building and tear it down?
Because then, I, I think, when, I didn't think about that, Todd, what I thought about was, there's an empty lot down there by the park, you know, you can. Buy that, make that into a parking lot for the park.
Right.
I didn't think about tearing down a building, so, I think special.
And, I mean, the, the way I am about history and nostalgia and everything, I mean, it's very near and dear to me. I, I love that stuff, I don't wanna do anything that's what our country was built on.
Family childcare homes, no. Fire station, no.
No.
Funeral home, I suggest we change that to special use.
Uh, that needs to be a special.
Or permitted, I don't see a problem with a funeral home here in town.
I don't either, I mean, you know.
It doesn't say crematory, so.
I was gonna say, we're not getting cremated here.
That's two different. We, let's look at the definition and make sure we're accurate. The definitions are back here, let's look at, let's see what funeral home says under our definitions.
Yeah, it has a crematorium as part of it.
Let me just.
We don't wanna smell it.
Yeah, I don't wanna say yes and no.
And may I ask you a question? What happens if goes to vote, it can be done?
The. And say, we don't recommend it, or we do recommend it, but it's still a.
Okay, so funeral home.
Does not include the actual cremation, just preparation and services.
Okay.
There you go. So I say permitted, I don't even think it needs a special.
Just permit?
I, I think.
Okay.
Uh, gas station, permitted. We've already got.
Yeah, you got two.
Two, two. Gravel, mineral extraction, no, heavy industrial, no, home occupation. What, what does home occupation mean?
It's a definition. So, that's why I included this, so you could go back and look. Uh, home occupation. Means any use conducted principally within a dwelling and carried on by the inhabitants therein with pay, without paid assistance, which uses. Clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for dwelling purposes, and does not change the character, although you can't, um. You can't, uh, the individual office of a professional man, woman, or artist without assistance shall be considered a home occupation. But the conducting of a clinic, hospital, barber shop, beauty, parlor, tea room, tourist home, animal hospital, or any similar use should not be deemed to be a home occupation. So basically, someone from working from home, but residential is not allowed in town center anyway.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to say no.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, because we've already got allowances for residential use.
Now, on, okay, next one is hospital, does that mean like an urgent care, or is that like? I thi- I think we did something with that, didn't we, there are hospitals?
Special use, but.
Hospital is institution providing health services primarily for human, inpatient medical or surgical care. For sick or injured, including related facilities such as an emergency room, laboratory, outpatient departments. Rehab departments, training and simple service facilities, staff offices. Medical office buildings or satellite facility operated by a hospital outside of the town.
There's no way we could even put one in town center.
Well, you know, keep in mind, your speech started out like that. It's. I mean, if urgent care came in today and said, we'd like to make that building an urgent care.
Why not?
Right, we need one.
I really wish somebody would, I had a lady that was talking about, um, OB-GYN. But she, she did, she did a little research, and decided there wasn't enough people right in the area, having children.
We don't have enough high schools.
We don't have any pregnant high schoolers.
Hey.
Hotel, hotel lodging, special use, intermediate healthcare facility, what is that?
An intermediate healthcare facility means a health-related institution or establishment. Planned, organized, operated, maintained, provides facility and services which are supportive, restorative, or preventative in nature. So, like P T O T, I would guess, with related social care to individuals who become of physical or mental condition, or both. So you do have that, require an institutional environment, but who do not have an illness, injury, or disability for which regular medical care and twenty-four hour day nursing. Services are required.
I say allow it, because.
Would that be like the same as like physical?
No, that's, that's more of a doctor's office, it, it would be more like a adult daycare center for mentally handicapped individuals.
Okay, I, I, listen, I heard it wrong.
Or people who need counseling services, or.
I like that.
So what are we doing with that one?
Uh, where, what's it called again?
Intermediate healthcare facility.
I, I say permitted, or special use.
I'd say permitted. What do you think?
But, that's just me, you guys can do whatever.
I would say special use.
We, we can, I mean, if you, we all gotta agree on this.
The, the reason I'm, I would say special use as opposed to permitted is because medical and dental offices is special use. Why would we put an adult daycare center as permitted and medical and dental special use?
Right, right.
And which leads me to the next one, medical marijuana.
The hotel one, what did you guys decide on that?
Uh, uh, it, we left it at special use.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the medical marijuana is permitted, but I think we need to take it to special use to match up with our other healthcare facilities.
I agree with that. I agree.
Well, family, no, nightclub, special use, nursing care facilities, special use.
Yeah, see, that would be almost the same one as the intermediate healthcare.
I've got maybe a dumb question here, what's the difference between a nightclub and a bar? I've got maybe a dumb question here, what's the difference between a nightclub and a bar or tavern?
Uh, a nightclub has.
They have a cabaret line soon.
They have to have so much square footage for dance floor and a band, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Wish the bar had that. So. Pretty much.
Yeah, that's, that's the difference.
Alright.
I had to actually look that up.
I need to know if people that like the party.
Office, special use, I don't know why, I think it should be permitted.
Ready for you.
Professional office, permitted. Uh.
Parks.
Outside storage, special use. Outside storage in the town center, I say no.
There was a golf on the middle of town. Nope.
Okay.
Uh, park is a no. But we already have one. It doesn't sit on the main.
Don't sit on the main drag, it is back from.
Sure.
Animal facility, I say special use. Playground, no, recreation center, special use, rec, 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 special use, special use, if anyone change those.
Nope.
R V park is a no. Recycling facility is a no, residential dwelling unit, uh.
We've already pretty much special use that, it would be like the hotel motel. They would have to go through and put the sprinkler system in if it was permitted.
Turned it into a multi fam.
Not multi family. Residential.
Let's see what's the definition.
Yes, please. But it would still.
Know what, we don't have it in here.
We do not.
We don't have a definition for that. We skip from languages to restaurant. Residential dwelling unit.
Definition for that.
I wonder if that is, is more like, um, the, um. Like, uh, people with. Serious disabilities. Like stay.
Uh, residential dwelling units as defined along, needs a single unit providing complete independent living facilities.
I bet this was council roster.
Housekeeping unit is designed, occupied, or intended for occupancy of separate living quarters with cooking, sleeping, sanitary facilities. Within the dwelling unit for the exclusive use of a family maintaining a household, so essentially it's kinda like an apartment condo. Deluxe.
I say no, not in town center.
Although town, the, under the code for town center. Uh, multifamily units were allowed. Let's see.
Multifamily is not allowed right now.
Nope, multifamily is not allowed.
Question mark next to that because of following restrictions.
It also puts multifamily. Um. Not allowed all the way across, so, and a P D, why isn't it allowed in a P D?
That's professional.
It's a planned development.
Oh, that's planned development, yeah.
So why wouldn't you have a multifamily, I mean. We, when we're discussing all this development around here, they're considering multifamily, single units, commercial.
Okay, well, we need to look into that one and make a code. Combine it with one of the other codes for the dwelling units that we already have.
So look at your town center code sixteen four two. A six. Number C. Says dwelling units within the commercial historical district may be allowed by special use permit. With the following restrictions or provisions. C says no standalone, single-family residential units are permitted. Residential units must be part of at least a duplex design or higher.
Then read the next one.
Dwelling units may be condominiumized and sold separately from the commercial building. Associated commercial portion, so.
We don't want that in the middle of town.
Well, essentially, is that. I guess, I guess, I'm just questioning residential block.
I mean, not the bar, well, bar. It already exists.
Already exists.
But. Does that fall under the residential dwelling unit and shall we leave that special use or do we want to say no?
It's on, on the.
It's a little hard to make that call without its.
We're considering residential dwelling, right?
Correct.
I think.
In town center.
We already have it, again, it's like the same situation with the gas stations and the bar and such, you know.
So we need.
Again, if Joey sold that entire building, it already has established apartments above it. You're saying that once that's sold, if they don't utilize it for that when they buy it, if somebody else that comes in there, and others apartment, so they can't use it for that again.
Alright, let's, let's leave it special use. Restaurant permitted, retail permitted, salvage, erecting yard, no, self-serve storage facilities. Is a no, single-family dwelling, no, solar, roof mounted. I, is this a business or is this a business installing solar energy?
Let's look.
Solar energy, I think it's. Saying that they can have it, I think they're saying they can have it on their work.
Yeah, she could put it on top of her business, just peachy if she wanted to, but, but it has to be for special use. I'd, I'd keep this special.
Okay, rest stop is no, veterinary clinic, special use warehouse and distribution?
No.
No, and wireless telecommunications equipment and facility, no, no. Um.
Texas residential.
What if, what if B R wants to open a storefront? Would that not fall under wireless telecommunications equipment and facility?
I think the equipment was more like the, like the actual towers and stuff.
There wasn't the tower.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like to guess, let's read.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just, I was thinking that's what, what it was.
Uh, facility means a freestanding facility, building, pole, tower, or structure used to provide only wireless communication services which consist of, without limitation. Antenna equipment, storage, and others accessory structures used to provide wireless telecommunications services. Uh, um, equipment. Is used to provide wireless telecommunications services, but which is not a fixed or contained. Uh, within a wireless facility, telecommunications facility, but instead of fixed or. Affixed to or mounted on an existing building or structure that is used for some other purposes. This is interesting, Frank, you're here.
Yes.
Equipment, I mean, you guys put your stuff on top of businesses.
And poles, yeah.
And poles, so. By leaving it. Not. allowable. Would that mean that. Broadband services can't be put on the top of these businesses? They can't fix their antenna.
Down there, if you drive to town, I'm sure somebody's got satellites and dishes and, you know, you're.
So again, so it's already there then.
It's already there.
Well, we gotta quote saying it's not allowed.
It's a special use on it, then you're gonna have to change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to change it to special use or.
But why, but not, let me ask you this, this is my, my question. Why is that up to the town to tell these businesses they can't have wireless telecommunications?
They own the building.
They. Right, I mean, I mean, to me, this is me, maybe I'm missing something. I feel like that's overstepping. By telling a business, they have an opportunity to obtain a better tel- form of telecommunications, wireless telecommunications. So they choose to go with a company that needs to have access to the roof to put a satellite dish up there. That's their building to put a satellite dish, why is the town talent get, saying that it's not your choice to do that, we determine if you have the right to do that or not.
So let's permit it.
Now, would that, would that include for the equipment, the only reason I'm thinking is cause when I drive into park. And there's some really nice houses and now there's a giant fake pine tree.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man.
That's why we would put.
Which, to me, that's equipment. But, because it's not a facility, it's a, it's an equipment, but it's a giant ugly fake pine tree right in front of it. So, and do you want one of those like parks down there?
But.
We want our phones to work and stuff.
Right.
It's a catch twenty-two.
Revising the definition of it.
So, but that's something.
That would be a good idea.
So, yeah, let's revise those two.
I think, I think you have to be careful that you don't sell, the business can sell the rights to A, A T and T. They could put up a cell tower right there on the roof. And then you're looking at something pretty ugly for a while.
For now, special use, until we get a better definition of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Have you, have you seen that or experienced that?
Yeah, and, well, previous companies, yeah, I mean, if you kind of leave it open, they'll, they'll sell root rights and. Put up a tower and nothing you really can do about it.
It's kinda like a air rights or whatever, where you can sell the air rights and no one can build anything. That will block that air right. Or whatever.
Right.
Wow.
So remember they need to look in votes.
Yeah, so that's, that's the only thing I was thinking, I was like, that big ugly tree.
I guess, there's several of them.
Yeah, so when you, you come up singing hills, or from where, where my house is, come up singing hills, and then you get on the. Whatever that road is that leads into Parker, and there's a couple of those brand-new big houses right there.
Yeah.
And there is a big fake tree with this wooden privacy fence that blocks like the bottom of it. But it just, and you're like, that is so awkward looking, and I know the pine tree look is supposed to be better than just a tower.
It looks better when it's in, in the middle of other pine trees.
And it's not, it is right by the front of the road.
Well, there's, there's one, there's one going out towards, uh, Monument.
Yes.
They made it look like a silo.
Okay, see that?
Like a grain silo.
Yeah, that would have at least melded in better.
Right.
Because this is literally just a big fake pine tree on the edge of the road, and there's nothing else around it.
Looks like a grain.
Okay, Joey, we, we. Boarded it up for you.
What are our next steps?
I see that, I'm a little concerned still up far. Because special, I'm sorry, not trying to be negative, but special use still means you guys can say no. Or you get two or three people on a board that are, have religious reasons, and that could happen, um.
Or on no growth.
Had a preacher in town come up to me and say, and if there was anything I could do to get that not to be a bar, I said you can buy it, which is true. Like, if he got on the board, him and his wife, maybe a couple people from town, you guys could, it could be voted out.
And there, there are people in town who are no growth.
I promise it's the bar, a lot of people don't want bars, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't even know. I wanna, I don't wanna rent a bar again, I did it, it was horrible. However, if it gets sold tomorrow, cause I have it for sale. Somebody, not necessarily you guys, but somebody, if it, say, three of you leave, and there's three new people that maybe don't want a bar, it could get voted down. And I could get sued for selling it to somebody.
As a bar.
As a bar, and they're not gonna be able to have it as a bar, I'm really concerned about it. I really wish you guys could relook at that, maybe even not accept more bars, maybe we don't need ten bars in town. I don't know if there's.
But we can't specify.
I agree, yeah.
Say, okay, well, we can't build any more bars. But, but the one that's there can stay.
I agree, there's no way to do that.
But we can rewrite the code that says. Pre-exist, say, no, we can dictate how many town center holds. Where's already one there?
You can say, the max allowance is.
So one more tries to come in and say, I'm sorry, we've already got two.
Max allowance, one.
Yeah. Why don't we have a code for personal opinions that affect the town?
We should.
One, no.
No, because they would be calling us.
So, I mean, if you guys only wanna tackle the town center issue tonight.
You just want, yeah.
Then we can start with that, you can make a recommendation.
And you can look over the next set, before the next meeting.
We can start setting this up like we did the last COVID versions.
Yes, do you wanna go back to twice a month? Or just tackle this one at a time?
I, I, I honestly think we're kinda, we, you know what needs to happen now? So I can almost guarantee we're gonna zip this, cause I think we, we gotta figure it out.
We're, we're certainly more informed and educated than we were this time last year.
Well, and now, you, you have this, so before the next meeting, you can all kinda go through these, make notes, come back to that meeting and go, okay, let's zip through this one. What's the vote, what's the vote?
Vote the votes.
I, I think that. You should consider having more meetings, one or two before your next, before next month's meeting. Because if Joey sells in the next couple of days, you know, she's gonna be up the creek. And same with anybody else that comes in and leases her building next to, or gas, the old community bank building. It's, we're gonna need to protect the people in town, and she's a large business owner here in town. And we need to help her out, and we need to help the other guys too, you know, and saying that the, the. Um, the car lot and stuff like that downtown, that's our downtown. And that's all we can grow is downtown unless we can get. Um, money to buy other property here in town or expand our zonkey.
Does it become official till it's published though?
I mean.
Once they adopt it.
Adopted.
So I think you should consider having more meetings before next month's.
More sooner than later.
Yes. Cause I've grabbed this out a lot.
Alright, let's do this.
Yeah.
Do it, I was, give a no.
You guys, real quick, this is off this point, but I was at the planning commission meeting last night for this, for the county. I highly recommend you guys follow up on that. You cannot believe some of the stuff that's gonna be going on, I mean, the amount of trucks, that, that development's gonna go in there, right across the street from me, ten miles out. The amount of trucks that are coming from all directions are gonna be tearing.
Yeah, I already had a conversation with, um, the historical society, the school, nobody. Nobody in this town has been asked for input on that. And we are in direct impact of that entire.
Thursday now, they just changed.
Yeah, they changed it to give the.
I was there till eleven o'clock last night, seven to eleven, when it got out, still didn't have any answers, they didn't vote on the, the craft project. Look, at the end of the day, I'm not stupid, but I think it's gonna go in. So do you know, did you know that they're not gonna take care of any of the roads on even Kiowa Bennett?
Yeah.
That's up to, that's up to Elbert County, let me tell you how bad those trucks, cause I, we do heavy construction, are gonna tear up that road.
Oh.
Well, look what they're doing to this road out here.
Oh, they're gonna be coming through here too, because there's places are gonna be getting product out east, and they're gonna be coming in this way, you know. These roads are gonna get trashed.
Let's make their high road small enough that they can't turn. Well, I think that's small enough that they can't turn their trucks up.
Well, they're already tearing up Kyle Bennett Road here in town.
Why can't, why can't we, we laugh, why can't we not make this, if the commercial trucks or whatever have to pay a toll? Does it tear enough a road?
Because they pay so much in taxes, even to do their.
C dot's not ours.
That's a losing fight.
But the problem is, Iowa's not getting the money to fix these roads.
Yeah, it's not a test.
Elbert County is not fixing these roads, they're not, and they're not gonna fix them when craft company comes in there to put that development in, and those trucks are gonna be coming in for years. Before we start seeing revenue from it. That, that road is gonna be so trashed, and so is this one, and, um, it's gonna be awful, and you guys should go, it's gonna be six o'clock Thursday. And, cause they haven't voted yet, but I, I think it's gonna go through, but at least you can at least hear what's going on, it was a long night, it was terrible. Not gonna lie, I'm gonna go to it because it's affecting us right across the street. It's not, it's not just a development, it's a city. People realize what they're doing.
Three, three thousand homes?
Yeah, and they're gonna have gas stations.
Thirty-five hundred.
Liquor stores, I mean, it's, I.
They're building a school?
They're gonna build a school.
And a small grocery store.
A small, it'll be elementary and middle school, the high school here will have to support the high school.
So is it, is it, he's just gonna do like he do it on the center, and does he need just a section like.
Yeah, that's why we need to do that.
It's like. We need to come out of the dark ages.
Yes, you'll have, once we have this refigured out, we need to send it to the town board for.
And let them just reapprove what we've already done.
Yeah, so let's look at calendars to schedule a next meeting.
Well, September fourth would be your next in-between meeting, as far as.
We don't want to do in-between. We need to get it. Uh I I cannot make it the fourth. I have other previous commitments that I need to make.
I'll be in Ireland.
Well, I know it's I know it's pretty soon, but you got you guys want to meet next Wednesday, a week from tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you guys.
I don't I don't have. I don't have anything.
I wish we had.
Twenty eight?
Been able to say yes to the child care center.
And I know there's people that have issues with where it's at. So if I do, I'll be honest, though, I think that it would have been safe enough based on what Adella was recommending.
It would have.
Um but it there it made that lady so mad. She isn't talking to me at all, so. She felt like I should have known. Based on being we called it a building and I sold on.
And that kind of puts her in the same situation if she sold the bar today as a bar and and she couldn't.
Sue me right now because I know about this.
Right.
If somebody comes in to buy that building, I have to tell them you nayed on the bar here. And those people are gonna go bye. My agent has to disclose it.
Yeah, so we gotta get.
Yeah, let's do it.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
You think it'll all go together just by the bar? That would be great.
Uh no, that's not.
What date is that?
Wednesday. Next Wednesday. Uh yeah, I can do that.
The town center. We're gonna get this town center.
No, I think we've already got that part done.
Well, you.
No, I mean, as for. Are we gonna do? The other ones too?
Yes.
Or are we just concentrating on the town center right now?
The next four columns. The ally that we tie and the PD.
And then we can get this to the board.
Yeah, well, because their meeting will be um on the. Thirteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we gotta get this into the board by thirteen.
I'm sorry, I lied. I was looking at the roughing. The tenth. But that's still giving you plenty of time.
Is on the tenth?
But that means you guys can go through things like I said, is your homework before next week. Uh no, hold on, we got a couple more things.
I would be there all the time.
Erica and John.
I tried.
Probably too big of a building for a coffee shop. I can split it up.
How? We we've been talking about this. The whole coffee shop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it could be within walking.
And you have two more things in old business. No, the the update to the zoning code, that was old business because we've already gone over. I have two more things to talk to you about. Okay, I'll move. Okay, this one, the single page you had in your packet. Child predator groups home proposed zoning code revision. Um basically um. It's just a change up. In the definition that we had. To add that a family. Okay. Uh what the definition of a family is because dwelling, single family, okay, talks about family. So what a family. Uh the added on is a family shall not include more than one. Registered sex offender over the age of eighteen unless related by blood, marriage, or legal adoption. The idea is that someone doesn't open a sex offender home. Um so that's just uh an update that. You're good with that? I'll tell Ruth, you're good with that. And then the next thing that is coming up. Um that is uh. Made into law, whatever that we have to deal with. So we will be putting both Kim and Ruth will be putting together an ordinance, the town. But we will need to add a chapter to the zoning code about natural medicine businesses. Um because the governor has now, well, they have signed into law um or they're. Decriminalizing the use of certain plants or fungi.
Mushrooms.
Mushrooms for people twenty-one age of older. It was approved by the Colorado Department of State, May twenty-three, the governor signed it. And tell the natural medicine regulation legalization into law. Um and so um towns are supposed to enact ordinances to regulate time, place, manner, et cetera. Um and so basically what this kind of goes through. Um and you can kind of read it, but I'll just kind of head it. Um basically, the the town is makes the finding that. Okay, Colorado has authorized towns to enact ordinances. Um and that they get to enact zoning where they're gonna put it. So like you maybe don't want a fungi center in the town center.
Yeah, so we can go. That's what we're that we need to do is just be permitted or not.
Right, so you're gonna need to add fungi center.
These items need to be looked at carefully. And they I need a motion and a second and a vote on it, not just.
I know, but I want I want you to I want you to read it though. That's what I'm saying. You need to read it. That's why I'm not gonna read it all to you, but read it. There's definitions on the second page. Okay. Then the next page is about distance from schools, hours of operation, public view. So look at that.
Very has a question.
Processing nuisance, yes.
Why do we have to put this in our code? Because it is in our code that we can't have any marijuana shops. Either way. So. We adopted the county's code on that?
Yeah.
Is the county gonna allow this?
I don't know. This came from Ruth.
This is.
Because I think.
I I get it.
Because I think it added on, because I think it added on specifically fungi.
They did just change.
Yeah, so I put a little mini one back here for. Anyway, go through, spend a minute reading. Okay, the other one was easy. Just spend a hundred and read this and take a look.
Well, we've got it as a special use.
It's a lot of in talking.
Yeah.
So let's do one at a time, because that's not gonna catch everybody's conversation. It's all gonna be guarded. We're not gonna be able to understand it.
Okay.
What I'm saying, when there was a proposal to have a meta or a recreational marijuana shop here in Kyowa. The board discussed and it was voted at that time. That they would adopt. The county code, which is they are not allowed. Period. No, nothing. And to me, this is the same thing.
Mushrooms could be considered medicinal.
So can pot.
I know, and pot could be done here. Probably, right? You guys would probably allow it?
Uh well, not right now, no.
We've got it as special use medical marijuana.
But what what I'm getting at is why do we need to go through this when they didn't do it with? The pot shops. It's just like, no, I know. I'm just bringing up. I'm just bringing up the point. You know, if we've got it, we should be doing the same thing for marijuana shops, have definitions set up for it.
Well, this says for plants as well, right? And then. Not just for mushrooms.
Right. Since we can't have legal counsel here tonight. If you don't feel comfortable with what you're reading, you have further questions that clearly myself and Sasha cannot answer for you. Maybe you table it until the next meeting and so Ruth can be present to speak to it.
Will she be here, you think, on Wednesday?
I do believe she would be there next Wednesday.
Yeah.
She's not gonna be there for a long period of time. She's dealing with with residual. She lost her mom not long after I did, so she's still doing residual stuff concerning that as well. I'm gonna retable this discussion on natural medicine to next meeting.
I second that.
And the only reason I brought that up is I think we need to keep it all uniform. If we're gonna do this for this, let's do it for the pot shops. Have the same thing. If we're not gonna do it. For the pot shops, then us don't go for this either. Just to take the stance that the county does and says, no, they're not allowed here. That's all I'm saying.
Until they allow one.
Right.
Review these. I would like for you guys to review these two new definitions. Um and then make a motion on those if you feel comfortable tonight.
On the group call one.
Because these are actual ordinances we will be presenting to the board of the next meeting.
We need to vote on this one.
First, we'd have to vote on.
We need to vote on the motion that we.
All in favor of postponing this discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Lori.
She's so quiet. Okay, so go back. Read the the group on one.
Okay, what are we doing with this? We're moving this.
So you just need to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
And move it to the town board.
Yeah. Okay, I make a motion to move this to the town board.
I second that.
All in favor? Oppose.
Yeah, that's that is unless there's ask if there's any other discussion.
Any other discussions? Any other business we need to talk about?
Can I ask one more thing? I'm sorry, but guys, these these truck drivers are flying down that hill. Both directions and ask her, she works out and hitting their Jake brakes all day long. Is there any way we can get signs and say they can get a ticket for that? This is ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
Awful.
Yeah, that's that's probably a C dump.
Yep, it's a C dump.
Also, for people living in the town, it happens at three thirty in the morning. They come in using Jake brakes.
Is there is there anything else? Okay, well, then if you want to uh make a entertain a motion to adjourn.
I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. On the tw- uh twenty-first of August at seven twenty-two.
I second that motion.
Well, shoot, you can first it. Okay.
All in favor? I'll oppose.